Well, good evening and welcome to the Monday, September 20th meeting of the Salem City Council. This is a special meeting. We'll be doing work on the Salem Climate Action Plan. And so it's a work session, mainly giving councilors a chance to talk with staff and consultants about some work we've been presented with on a climate action plan. So if the recorder would please call a roll.
Certainly. Counselor Stapleton?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Present.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Lueng? Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy? Counselor Nordike? Counselor Lewis?
Here.
And Mayor Bennett?
And Counselor Lewis, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the special meeting agenda.
Yeah. Second by Lewis. In discussion, okay. The recorder please call a roll.
Judy, you need to call the roll for them to approve the special council agenda.
Sorry, my mic was muted.
Oh. No one was answering.
Counselor Nordike?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Vanessa here.
Counselor Nordike, we're voting on approval of the agenda.
I vote to approve. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Lueng? Absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion approved. Go ahead then, Counselor Hoy, on any additions or deletions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of additions to the agenda.
Second by Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have added a presentation attachment to item 2.8.
All right. In discussion, okay, if the recorder please call a roll.
Counselor Hoy? Counselor Nordike? Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Stapleton?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips?
Aye.
Counselor Lueng? Absent. Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We'll move on then to the main action for this evening, which is a discussion of the Climate Action Plan. And Mr. Fernandez, who's going to lead this? Patricia?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. If I may, we have our project manager for the Climate Action Plan, Patricia Farrell, with us tonight, as well as our consultant project manager, Kim Morrow.
Oh, okay.
For the presentation duties this evening. And what Patricia is going to ask you is to, if we could limit questions to just clarifying questions, they got about a 20 to 30 minute presentation.
Right.
Then leave us plenty of time to engage in in-depth question answers, which obviously is what we really want to do tonight. You'll recall that council asked that we take this on, oh, a little less than a year ago. It was funded. We hired the consultant. We've had a committee of 30-plus people helping us, citizens, residents, including Counselor Anderson, Nordike, and Gonzalez. We're thankful for all of their help, the work that's been accomplished. It's a very difficult task to take on, but I think we hope that we'll enjoy what we've come up with and hopefully have good questions and we can lead to the December public hearing and then to adoption shortly thereafter. So today is really for questions and there's certainly still time to make changes and improvements in the plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Patricia's capable hands.
Very good. Just one thing I want to underscore that you mentioned, there will be a public hearing in December on this, and that's when there'll be opportunity for public comment, as well as really further, more detailed discussion too at that time, as councilors become more familiar with this, members of the public become more familiar. We, I'm sure, will have a rich discussion in December as well.
That's correct, Mayor. In fact, you'll see in the schedule that Patricia and Kim will show you that there is at least one more meeting of the task force.
Great.
And certainly a couple of months to take any comments. In the meantime, now that people have been able to see the draft, the general public, and we certainly will accept comments, and if there's changes, improvements, clarifications, we certainly will take those on in advance of the of the public hearing in December.
Great. And Patricia, part of your presentation will include very clear contact information for the public, if they'd like to send you emails or want to come to a meeting. I'm not clear on what the meetings are like of this task force, but I hope you'll make real clear how to keep in touch with you and your committee.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening. My name's Patricia Farrell. I'm the Climate Action Plan Manager for this project. And as Peter mentioned, we also have Kim Morrow here tonight from Verdis Group, which is our consultant for the project. So we're going to be splitting duties, and I'm going to kick this off. So Kim, next. As Peter also mentioned, we began this project, actually, more than a year ago, in August of 2020. And we're at the point now where we are getting ready to draft, have the draft plan available to the public to look at in probably mid-October. But I want to go through some of the steps that the process has gone through up to this point. So Kim, next one. One of the first things we did was look at our vulnerabilities to climate change. And so this list, you can see that we're susceptible to both floods and drought, and more extreme heat days, which I think we can all relate to, and certainly more numbers of high-risk wildfire days. And all of these have public health implications to our community. And I think it's important to note that these are not experienced equally across Salem. They tend to be more disproportionately impacted impacts to our BIPOC community and to elders and children and people who live and work outdoors. So we've tried to keep that in mind throughout the Climate Action Plan. Next slide, please. So in October of 2020, City Council adopted these two goals. The first one is to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, which we will refer to as GHG. So we will reduce our GHG emissions from our 2016 levels 50% by 2035. And then by 2050, we will be carbon neutral. So those were set, and those provided the framework for the plan as we move forward. Next slide. So the Climate Action Plan is actually two pieces. One is the mitigation component, which is the strategies that we have to reduce our GHG emissions and to reach those goals set. And then the other component is more about resiliency and adapting to the climate change impacts that we are already experiencing and that we will continue to experience across the community. So you will notice in the list of strategies that you received, that there's quite a few that, when you look at the GHG impacts, it'll say low, but it's often because it's more focused on building resiliency. The other thing the Climate Action Plan does is it lists our key partners and the lead agencies. And also, it has on the strategies page, you'll see that it lists not only the GHG impact, but a rough cost estimate, the key partners, or the key agency for implementation, as well as co-benefits, because some of the actions kind of cross-cut across different categories, and also a rough timeline. I'd just like to note that the one we sent you is version 16, and we are currently working on version 18 right now. So it's still a work in progress, and there will be some slight changes to it when you see it in December. Next slide. So here's the process diagram, and just showing kind of where the task force meetings were and where we are now by the yellow dot. So we have one more task force meeting in late October. That'll be after the draft plan is put up on the website and sent to the task force. And that meeting will focus on implementation and going through the strategies one more time with the group and making sure that we have the wording correct, and looking at some of those key actions for implementation. We are also going to be, in the meantime, in between this meeting and December, continuing to meet with different groups, as well as boards and commissions. So it's kind of an ongoing process for outreach. Next slide. So one of the key things that we did throughout this process was to use a variety of different public engagement techniques. So next slide, Kim. I mentioned the task force. Three city councilors are on the task force, as well as 33 different organizations from a broad cross-section of our community. So we really tried to engage groups that aren't typically included in task force, task force like in the city. So for instance, we have public health, we have people with disabilities who are represented by Shangri-La, we have lots of nonprofits, and different groups representing the BIPOC community. So we're trying to get a broad cross-section, and also we're using them to help get the word out to their various networks. So that's one of the main focuses of the task force, not just to come to the meetings, but also to engage with their networks and let people know what's going on. Okay, next slide. So this is an example of one of the outreach activities that we do. For each of the task force meetings, there's an activity on the website. And so this is one that's open actually right now until October 3rd. And so there's a little idea card with a little light bulb there, so the person could go in, they can click on that, they can add an idea, or they could go and look at the ideas that are posted, and they can add comments or like, put a little heart next to ones that they like. So it's a good way for us to get feedback, and we've incorporated a lot of the results from these different activities in the strategies. So it's a way of vetting and kind of getting input from people who aren't necessarily attending all the meetings. Next slide. In addition, we've been using a variety of methods, besides the usual going to meetings and presenting to different groups, we've been going to community events in person, if possible. We've also been going to lots of meetings, virtual meetings. We're also doing social media posts and newsletters, and we've been doing a series of public service announcements in both English and Spanish, and we have a series of handouts. All meetings are posted and recorded online, so that people can go back and listen to them later. And we've also done some hard copy surveys for people who don't want to use the internet or don't have access to the internet. So we've been trying to do a broad cross-section of outreach strategies. Next slide. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Kim Morrow now, unless there's any clarifying questions anybody has at this point. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Kim Morrow with Verdis Group. It's wonderful to be here with you all, and it's been a pleasure to work with the Salem community over the past year plus. I'd now like to cover some of the main components of the Climate Action Plan. One of the major goals of the plan is to reduce emissions. So one of the first questions that you may have is, where do Salem's emissions come from, anyway? In 2019, a greenhouse gas inventory was completed using 2016 data, and this pie chart shows the main categories of emissions. The largest source of emissions is transportation, followed by electricity generation. And these two mirror the nation as a whole. Transportation and electricity are also the numbers one and two sources of emissions nationally. The third largest category of emissions in Salem is stationary combustion, which is most commonly natural gas usage. The total amount of emissions in Salem in 2016 was 1.5 million metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, which works out to a per capita emissions figure of 9.6 metric tons of CO2e. This figure is slightly above the national average, and also a little above nearby cities such as Portland and Seattle, which might be interesting for you to know. The strategies in the Climate Action Plan were developed with three objectives in mind: to reduce emissions, to build resilience to climate impacts, and to increase community The Climate Action Plan contains nearly 180 strategies that fall into the seven categories listed here. Since most of Salem's transportation emissions come from the transportation and electricity sectors, the majority of the strategies address those two areas, but the other five are very important for increasing equity and building resilience. I'd now like to share with you our greenhouse gas emissions forecasts. I'll show you two specific scenarios and walk you through how we got there. Before I do, I'd like to make a little disclaimer. Northwest Natural has reached out to us and asked if we could incorporate some new data that they have available. We will be working with them to make sure the most recent information is incorporated into the final version of the plan. So some of our projections may shift slightly during the draft review process. Just wanted to let you know. So here you see scenario one. On the horizontal axis, you'll see the years between 2016 and 2050. On the vertical axis, you see net greenhouse gas emissions measured in metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent. And to say a word about that metric, that's a measure used to compare the emissions from various greenhouse gases on their global warming potential by converting all of the gases into the equivalent of carbon dioxide. So if that makes sense, it's just a single metric used to measure GHGs. So the colors used on the graph represent 10 different emission reduction targets that were modeled, and the assumptions were chosen based on their ability to significantly reduce emissions. Here we have a list of all the assumptions that were modeled in scenario one. You'll see that it included targets like doubling the rate of EV or electric vehicle adoption, quadrupling the rate of transit ridership, reducing local commuter traffic, and more. The results of this modeling showed that if Salem were to achieve all 10 of those emissions reduction targets, it would reduce emissions significantly. The top blue arrow that you see on the graph shows where Salem's emissions would be in 2050 if Salem took no action. And the second arrow shows where Salem would be after taking climate action in this scenario. The avoided emissions are shown in the gray-hatched area of the graph. However, in this scenario, Salem would still not achieve its goal. Salem's goal line is represented by the diagonal white line that runs across the graph, and by the two gold stars that appear at 2035 and 2050. So in scenario one, instead of reaching a 50% reduction by 2035, as is the goal, this scenario achieves a 40% reduction. And instead of reaching net zero by 2050, this scenario reaches a 58% reduction. So why wasn't the target met in this scenario? Even if we assume Salem makes a lot of progress on climate action? The answer is because several types of emissions will be challenging to eliminate. We expect there will still be internal combustion engine cars and heavy trucks on the road in 2050. We expect that residents will still be using natural gas in their homes, as they do today, and that commercial and industrial users will also still be using natural gas. So as you can see here in this pie chart, transportation emissions will still constitute nearly half of the remaining emissions in 2050. Natural gas, represented here by the 12% residential stationary combustion and the 16% commercial stationary combustion, will constitute together nearly one-third of remaining emissions, and wastewater will constitute 19%. So after seeing the results of scenario one, we asked, what would it take to really eliminate all fossil fuel emissions in Salem in 2050? So we ran a second model to see what this could look like. And before I walk you through this scenario, I'd just like to say it's important to remember that there are many possible iterations of a model that could lead to the reduction targets. This is just one. And it's also important to remember that this is a conceptual model. It's meant to provide information that may be helpful in decision-making, but it's not a prediction of what will actually happen, nor is it a recommendation. So in scenario two, the same 10 target reductions from scenario one are achieved, are assumed to be achieved, in addition to nine more, which you can see listed here. The nine additional targets reduce all other sources of fossil fuel emissions, from natural gas to electricity to transportation. You might notice that some of them seem unrealistic. For example, number 11, halt the entry of non-resident internal combustion engine traffic. It's hard to imagine that in 2050, we would set up barriers to literally prevent anyone with an internal combustion engine vehicle from entering Salem City limits. But since we can't predict the myriad of factors that will be at play 15 or 20 years from now, and the multitude of changes that will occur in the market, in the regulatory environment, and in consumer behavior, we created a mathematical model that took every remaining fossil fuel emission source and brought it to zero. Here's the list of all 19 assumptions that went into scenario two. And here are the results. So the results of scenario two showed that if Salem were to achieve all 19 of those emissions reduction targets, it would reduce emissions quite significantly and meet its goals. Instead of a 50% reduction by 2035, as is the goal, this scenario actually exceeds the goal and achieves a 57% reduction by 2035. And in 2050, the goal of net zero emissions is met. So the top blue arrow shows where Salem's emissions would be in 2050 if Salem took no action. The second arrow shows where Salem would be after taking climate action in scenario one, and the third arrow shows where Salem would be in scenario two. And again, the avoided emissions are shown in gray. Again, these are conceptual models that are intended to provide information to inform recommendations. What is most important is to keep three things in mind. First, the actions that you will take as a community in the next one to two years, what you're going to put in place for the next three to 10 years, and finally, doing robust tracking and monitoring of your progress and accelerating certain initiatives accordingly. You might ask, what about purchasing carbon offsets? Carbon offsets are actions taken to compensate for the admission of greenhouse gases, and it's currently very common for organizations to purchase carbon offsets to enable them to claim they have achieved net zero emissions. But neither of the models we created include carbon offsets, other than tree planting within Salem's geographic boundary. Carbon offsets could be considered as a strategy for Salem to meet net zero emissions, but it would likely be cost prohibitive. Currently, offsets typically cost between $6 and $15 per metric ton of carbon dioxide equivalent. And with scenario one showing close to 600,000 metric tons of CO2e remaining in 2050, the annual cost to the city of Salem to offset those emissions in today's dollars would range from $3.9 to $9.7 million per year. So city funds are arguably much better spent on initiatives to reduce emissions rather than purchasing offsets. However, by the time 2050 draws near, the most likely outcome to achieve net zero will probably include some carbon offsets or other similar strategies to offset those hard-to-eliminate niche GHG emission sources. So moving on now, I'd like to say a word about the most important part of this plan, which is implementing it once it's complete. Some of the most important things to have in place to ensure successful implementation of this plan are the following. First, to hire a full-time coordinator to lead the implementation, and for the city to provide funding for that person and the program. Second, to establish a working group to guide community-wide implementation, and that working group could be similarly diverse as the task force is now, including many different voices from across the Salem community. Third is to prioritize equity in the implementation of the plan. Equity runs throughout the strategies. There are many strategies that seek to prioritize equity in the way that the Salem community approaches its climate goals. So it's going to be very important in implementation to keep the goal of improving equity top of mind. The fourth is to regularly communicate with Salem residents, businesses, and others about climate action initiatives and progress. The fifth is to track and report emissions at regular intervals. It's going to be very important to monitor progress regularly, to get that regular feedback loops going, so you have a sense of how you're doing relative to your goals. And then finally, we recommend updating the Climate Action Plan every five years, to sort of take a comprehensive stock of what's been done, to rerun some of these analytics and adjust course as may be necessary. So as we get near the end of our presentation here, we just wanted to point out some of the nearly 180 strategies in the Climate Action Plan that will have the biggest impact on reducing emissions, so that you can get an idea of the kind of actions the city should be considering in the near future. The following five strategies related to energy can have a high impact in reducing emissions. So creating energy benchmarking and transparency policies that reward building owners who improve building energy efficiency. Energy efficiency improvements are some of the lowest, low-hanging fruit, or easiest low-hanging fruit, to reduce energy usage and reduce emissions. So creating incentive programs to encourage building owners to take those steps. Similarly, a comprehensive program to help residents and business owners weatherize buildings will also help improve energy efficiency, with an emphasis on low-income renters to start with. Providing incentives for new construction that is all-electric. This is a growing trend in many cities around the country now, to construct new homes that use electric for all appliances and phase out natural gas. Similarly, we could implement an incentive program for residents and businesses to switch from natural gas appliances to all-electric models. And then finally, implementing policies to reduce natural gas usage, such as requiring all-electric new construction, and/or prohibiting fossil fuel usage in new construction, and/or banning the use of gas and oil in residential appliances. And these four strategies in the transportation sector could have a high impact in reducing emissions here. Expanding public transit infrastructure in Salem with a focus on equity-based access is one of the most important kind of overarching objectives in the transportation section. Increasing urban density along the core transportation networks similarly is a really important goal that the city should keep front and center as it continues to develop and add population to the city. Third, incentivizing Salem-area employees to use alternative forms of transportation, and this aligns with a recent ruling from the DEQ, so just kind of, oops, going along with that new rule to incentivize people to get out of their single occupancy vehicles as much as possible. And the last idea here is to charge for city-controlled parking, using a model intended to reduce parking in the central business district to 70 to 80% of supply. And the idea there is to disincentivize single occupancy vehicles and to encourage folks to take alternate forms of transportation down to the central business district. So in closing, I'd like to offer a reminder about where we are in the process. We are in the tail end of the section indicated by the yellow dot here. We're currently finalizing the draft Climate Action Plan. It will be released to the public for review next month. At the end of October, we'll have our last workshop with the task force, which will focus on implementation planning. And as you know, as you heard earlier, the public hearing is scheduled for December 6th, at which time you will have the opportunity to approve the final draft version of the Climate Action Plan. So that concludes our presentation, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'd be happy to take any questions now.
I'll start off with one, just to kind of break the ice. Really, two, I guess. One that I hear, and I'm sure other folks do too, is sort of, what's this mean in the larger context of climate change? the larger context of climate change? How do, the charts you show us are very interesting. They don't include Kaiser, they don't include East Salem, they don't, I assume, you can help me out with that. But both the local context, the state context, the national and the broader context, I think there's often a feeling that anything we do will be a drop in the bucket and make no difference. And can you help us out with that? How to kind of deal with that? Or will you be presenting charts that show us in that context, in various contexts?
Sure, I can say a word about that. That's a great question. As we all keep hearing, the International Panel on Climate Change just recently issued another alarming report underscoring the urgency of the need to take action on climate change. And the world's scientists have underscored that we need to keep warming to under 1.5 degrees Celsius. We've already warmed over one degree, and there was a new report that just came out the other day that indicated there's honestly not much hope for being able to achieve that 1.5 degrees Celsius target, given the trajectory that we're on right now. So basically, my answer to your question, Mayor, is all hands on deck. We need international action, we need national action, we need state-level action, and we need local action, and we need individual action.
Yeah. Are all hands on deck, or is Salem on deck? Do you see what I mean? I think people have this feeling that this isn't happening in other places. And I think you, as a consultant that deals in this area, might be able to kind of allay that feeling, that we're kind of alone in this. I mean, I assume Kaiser has hired you, and Marion County has hired you. You'll be over in the city of Dallas, working with them on their plan, and Governor Brown on staff. What's going on?
Yes, yes, we would love to. No, Salem is absolutely not alone. This has been a tidal wave of climate action by local municipalities all over the country in recent years. So there are just hundreds of cities that have made climate pledges, hundreds of cities that have climate action plans. Many, most of the cities near you already have climate action plans. Portland, Seattle, Milwaukee, many, many, many cities on the West Coast. So you're not alone by any means.
Okay. And you are pulling in some ideas from those communities as part of what we're talking about, like tonight and the future with this plan?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Councilor Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Patricia, I wonder if we could go back to the first slide, because I think there is something missing. It shows the goal, the slide that shows the Salem goals. Yeah, okay. I've got a comment and a question, but I think when we're talking about the Salem goals, I think it's important to include the base year of 2016. Just so there's no confusion about 50% of what. And I believe 2016 is our base year. So I think it would be good to add that to this slide. But that brings up my question, because I know that the goal for the state of Oregon is different than the goal for the city of Salem. And what I've heard already tonight is this is going to be a joint effort. It's not the planet of Salem taking this on, it's the planet Earth. And I'm curious, why we can't have consistent goals that match? So we're all working for the same thing, we're all in this together?
Oh, Council, I guess I'll take that on. The council adopted these goals. I seem to recall that there was some discussion at the time about the state had goals, but this was the goals, the council had some robust discussion about it, and some discussion whether these were aspirational, or whether these were real. And so what we've done here is simply shown the kinds of actions that need to be taken to achieve these goals. You know, in the end, the council, you know, this plan will sort of set, once it's adopted, this council, this plan will set the stage for council and staff to then take action in implementing these things. And the more we implement, the closer we get to the goal. But yeah, I agree with you that they should be unified, but at this point, this is what the council adopted, and we took on early on in this process.
I'll just add that we are closely tracking what's happening at the state level. In fact, we're going to be having the state Climate Action Plan Manager coming and speaking with the task force on September 28. And that will be live-streamed and recorded as well. So we're carefully tracking that, because a lot of those will have trickle-down effects on the city for implementation.
Will you be, when you present the final plan, will that also include a, not a recommendation, but some sort of opportunity for the council to take a second look at realigning with the state of Oregon? I mean, if we're way off, or, does that make sense? I hear what Jim's talking about, and I just wondered if we'll be looking again at a realignment with our colleagues out there.
Yeah, I think we can. We can, Patricia, you can, I'll let you jump in here in a second. So, you know, at whatever point, the council can align, realign the goal, and if need be, we can then take a second look, or the council can certainly use the actions that are in the plan, and we can use either what we know, or bring our consultants back to help us with, all right, and whatever the goals are, then what are the best actions to take? So Patricia, take it from there.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna add that we are looking at kind of reducing the timeline in strategies for implementation, because, you know, rather than having a 30-year plan, it's much easier to focus on, you know, the first five years.
Yeah.
And really focus on that. And then, as Kim said, reassess where we are, and see where the state is, and see what's happening with technology, and kind of, it's going to be an iterative process.
Okay. Could we remove, then, this slide? I can't see the council.
Oh.
There we go, now. Well, I'll ask another one, then. Kim, you mentioned this situation with Northwest Natural Gas. I know they have a batch of programs, they're doing a batch of ideas they've been working on over the years. We've worked with them on a couple of them in kind of some cogeneration activities, and helping us with some technology. Will you be, will this include what you were talking about in working with them, both modeling and a look at what's going on in the technology of both sourcing and use of natural gas? It's such a common heating element here. It sort of makes you a little nervous when there's discussion of, let's cut off people's natural gas, as one of the goals here. So can you help me out here, what's going on with Northwest Natural?
Yes, absolutely. They've been a great partner in this process. They have had a representative on the task force all the way along, and he's provided valuable input. So he provided input to the modeling when it was done a few months ago, and he provided really helpful emissions factors that were included into our modeling. And yes, we've talked about their plans to increase their capture of renewable natural gas. They have plans to include hydrogen in their system. The most recent request they made was that they recently filed some, filed some information with a regulatory agency, showing how they could achieve their carbon-free goals. I think it was earlier than they had planned. And we didn't have that information before, and so we were in the process of setting up a meeting with them to just go through it really carefully, and make sure what we have modeled is still correct, or whether it needs to be modified. So we want to get the basics right, but some of the particulars, like you mentioned, co-gen facilities at the wastewater treatment plant. We know that Salem has additional capacity to maybe create, to capture more wastewater emissions, but that's not modeled in right now, because that's a project that hasn't been done yet. And there's a million things that are possibilities that haven't been done yet. So the modeling kind of includes, sort of, it includes lots of detailed assumptions, but it doesn't get down to a super, you know, grain of sand kind of
Right.
... analysis of every possible scenario.
Okay, great, thank you. Kristi, do you have your hand up? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'd just start with a comment, in that I was watching the 5 o'clock news tonight, and on KTW, they mentioned that tomorrow Salem is going to break its record for a number of 80-degree days in a year. I think we're going to have our 90th 88-degree day tomorrow, which is, and Portland is, Portland is going to break their record this week as well, in terms of number of 80-degree days. So I think that's kind of set some context for the importance of the work that we're talking about here. But my question is, you mentioned something about incentivizing developers to use electricity rather than natural gas. What are some of those, what do those incentives look like? And what are some of the things that other communities are doing in that regard?
Great question. Sometimes the incentives will take the form of reduced fees, development fees for the developer. Usually, that's what it is, because that's what a city can control, that's what a city can offer. So it would be having to do with reduction in fees, reduction of taxes, you know, tax incentives, tax breaks, that kind of thing.
Thank you. And are other local communities doing something similar to that? Do you know, have you ever adopted those kinds of things?
Yes, there have been many communities that have adopted those kinds of things. There are several sources that we reference for policy recommendations. And so we know that it's being done successfully in other places. I could look up that information and send it to you later, if you'd like some specific examples.
Thank you, that'd be great.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question, I think, is for Director Fernandez. Looking at all of this, this report, and I guess I'll start with just saying that I loved reading this. I sent a quick email to the counselors who served on the task force, just saying, thank you for all your work. This is just a report that got me really excited, because it addresses so many of the different things that I'm really excited about implementing, and hoping to see a lot of progress being taken, things like bike lanes and pedestrian infrastructure and all that. So, Mr. Fernandez, I was wondering, the CIP that we have now is for five years. With this change, or with this plan, does that change? Do we relook at that plan in its entirety and say, okay, we're going to hold on, and we're going to start focusing on bike and pedestrian infrastructure before other projects? Or how does that work?
Yeah, thank you, Council. That's a great question. So I want to take just a slight step back. The capital improvement plan is the funding plan. So first and foremost, any project that's in the CIP is a project that has funding associated with it. So I think what the better question is, is do we refocus the funding priorities for the projects that are listed in the infrastructure master plans, as we bring them forward? And do we put them under the spotlight of the Climate Action Plan? And that's what, that's what council adopting the Climate Action Plan will do, is it will give us the direction, so that as either we bring projects forward, the community, the council, we can say, yes, these are meeting those goals, or they're not quite meeting those goals, or some meet the goals better than others. Now, remember that we have, there's always, especially for transportation, what I always call the biggest bugaboo, we need money. So the future bond issue, you know, we would want to focus on, you know, climate action, but we also have other, you know, FOSI, I guess, if you will, you know, equity, pedestrian safety, congestion. So I guess what we'll have to need is some kind of Venn diagram that says, all right, so here are these projects, which ones land in the middle that best address those, and those are the ones that we would want to move forward. But yes, we would absolutely want this plan, and what are the actions here, to then shine a spotlight on what we are, what we as a community are proposing to fund in the future.
Thank you very much.
One of the things I noticed was a very heavy reliance on electrical alternative as being the preferred choice. And I grew up in eastern Washington, where electric everything was being done as a result of some of the massive dam projects that were done. My understanding right now, I was at a meeting with Salem Electric within the past week, where there was a discussion of a move to begin removing, I think there was three or four dams on the Snake River, which are currently pretty basic to the Bonneville system. What is the, is there an understanding in all of this, of the capacity of our electrical system? Is that, or our electrical generating system? Or are you all, or is there the contemplation of nuclear power? What is going on here with electricity that's, how's it being generated, I guess? In the kinds of numbers we're talking about, to replace natural gas, replace gasoline, and those kinds of other fuels that we've gotten used to? What do you all have in mind?
That's a great question, Mayor, and that's an important issue in climate planning. And we'd have to ask PGE and Salem Electric to give the real answer. I can't claim to speak for them, but I do know that they all do very intense future planning of their capacity needs, which are based on population projections, and also other trends, like the need for electric vehicle charging, for example, is another very big increasing need. And so they plan for those, the basic plan is to incorporate as many elements of renewable energy as possible, to get to 100% renewable energy, while also increasing capacity to account for the additional load of electrification.
So will PGE and Salem Electric, or PGE, PPNL, and Salem Electric be part of the final report, in terms of describing that capacity growth that would be associated with this, and how all of it fits together? The reason I ask is, I look at California, where you have rolling brownouts, Texas is having some problems, other states having similar problems, as they move around in kind of dealing with these kinds of difficult issues. And I don't think we're ready for those, or need to, or are we planning not to let that happen? So I just, I just alert you, I do get asked about this stuff, and I'm just curious when I hear that new reliance. So I'll look forward to the discussion that you'll bring to us.
Okay. And just a quick response to that. The Climate Action Plan does not get into the level of detail of planning the operational plans of the utilities themselves. That's still rightly the purview of the utility's own planning.
That's why they need to share.
Right, right.
It'd be very difficult to talk equity if we're not talking about where these sources are going to come from, and what the costs look like. So I, as you all describe equity, I think you're right, in terms of the importance of it, we make sure that we're really talking equity. Tom, would you have your hand up? You're muted.
Sometimes you can't tell whether I'm muted or not muted.
Yeah.
Just a process question, Kim. What are you planning to do on October 27 with the Climate Action Task Force? What more detail will you get into? And it will be, will it be in response to some of the issues that are raised tonight, as well as in response to other issues that we've gotten from other public comment?
Yes, thank you, Tom. We plan to spend the first part of the meeting discussing kind of these updates, yes, so discussing what feedback we've received, what comments the task force has. But we want to keep the focus of that workshop as much as possible on implementation planning, which is a very necessary step in the process, and it can be detailed with all the different partners involved. So we have a particular workshop facilitation planned, and we want to make sure we have time to get through that. So, but we will also be setting up an online page for the task force members and the public to provide feedback. And so some of the feedback is going to happen asynchronously in that way.
Well, thank you very much, and that leads to sort of my second discussion here. I got tons of questions and tons of comments. I read everything. I'm not going to take the council's time to ask.
You were on the committee, you ought to be pretty familiar with, Tom. So I figure you've asked all your questions.
Well, no, I got a lot more, Mr. Mayor, but those are ones that I'm just talking to Kim now. I think I can just send you with with copies to Director Fernandez and Patricia Farrell, some of my questions, and then maybe you can respond or say, we don't need to respond. But I do have one particular question that I'm interested in, and that's the gas tax. And there's clearly an equity problem there. And I'm the chair of the City Finance Committee and Bob Baron, before he left, and now Josh and I set aside that it's gotta be approved by the voters. Again, that's outside of the scope here. But we've been talking about ways to resolve that, and it seems like it'd be pretty easy, just like the state gives child tax care credits and that sort of stuff. But what I saw in the in the gas tax, you didn't really talk about the benefits. In other words, the gas tax funds can be used for transportation. And part of that transportation, looked at broadly, can be sidewalks, can be intersections to make it safer for pedestrians. So there's a whole lot of benefits from the gas tax that have been discussed. And I hope we could have some discussion of it at the at the, I don't need to have any now, but at the next meeting to come to the council. One other thing, Mr. Mayor, and then I'll turn it over.
Okay, because that's really not related to the Climate Action Plan that we're talking about here, is it?
Well, yes and no.
Yeah, yeah.
Just in that, you know, I mean, it it's a carrot and the stick approach. And and within this report, there there's a whole lot of talk about how that would be a disincentive for some folks to drive if that has if that happens. So I think it is part of it. But my other question, it relates to waivers of SDCs. I see at one point, the folks in the Public Works Department weren't interested in doing this, but I've had some discussions since then. And we waive SDCs for low income housing. We waive SDCs for ADUs. And to me, there's a possibility of what would happen if we waived, for example, transportation SDCs to developments in the core area, which really aren't gonna transportation SDCs are paying for transportation developments on the outskirts of the city. So I I'd be interested in some sort of discussion of how any kind of waiver of the five different SDCs might affect the Climate Action Plan. The two that I'm specifically thinking of are parks. Well, I'm thinking of all of them because this would only be waiver in the downtown core area, where in effect, there aren't gonna be new parks, there aren't gonna be more wastewater capacity or anything else. So I'd be interested in that. Then I have one kind of question, which is I I'm a little unclear as to what you talk about when you say that you need to remove, capture all wastewater and then also the septic tanks, have people get rid of septic tanks in the city. I'm very interested in the capturing the wastewater. That might if you have an answer now, or if you have an answer later, that'd be great.
Sure, I can respond. Thank you, Councilor Anderson, for your careful review of of everything. We always appreciate your questions. And absolutely, please feel free to email me all of your questions, and we'll respond to them as soon as we can.
Be careful what you ask for.
Let's keep it on climate change, not not yet too far afield.
Well, to say a word about the the wastewater issue, yes, I realized that we had a couple of other questions about that, and we didn't mean to be confusing about that. But in scenario two, it was an exercise in taking all remaining fossil fuel emissions and bringing them down to zero. And so the emissions from septic are very small in Salem because there are hardly any septic systems. But nonetheless, they are a category of emissions, and so they just needed to be included in the list. But it we know it's a very small amount. That's the short answer.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Counselor Phillips?
Um, a couple of comments, like a broad comment, and then a couple like conceptual questions based on this outstanding presentation. One, I'm a little bit nervous to talk tonight because this is such a big process, and the data that was presented to us was so thorough. One of the supporting documents had like eighty one PDF pages. And I'm not sure that I understand, you know, how some of that is laid out mathematically. So I'm encouraged to hear that I can, you know, shoot those questions to staff after tonight's meeting. But really, just to compliment to everybody who is involved in this process. You know, it is incredibly serious, as Counselor Hoy had said. You know, after, you know, living through the last year, I mean, it's the wildfires last year, the the ice storm, and then the heat event this summer, which, you know, we had people die in our community as a direct result of heat. I mean, the the time is now to do these things. And and you know, my comment is that, you know, scenario one does not look like it's sufficient, but it looks like it's hard to do. It'll not be easy to get there. And trying to get closer to scenario two is gonna take, you know, some tough actions, you know, politically. But I'm I I think many of us are willing to really seriously move towards, you know, getting past scenario one and closer to scenario two. I I conceptually, I want some help understanding this. So PGE just spoke last month, and I think they said, and I've looked at their website, that because of House Bill twenty twenty one, they've worked with the Coalition to adopt eighty percent climate reduction, the carbon dioxide reduction by twenty thirty, and and a hundred percent reduction by twenty forty. So given that the electrical company that supplies most of the the citizens here, is that why the curve starts to bend down without any, you know, active input from the city of Salem?
Yes, that's exactly right, Counselor Phillips. We we knew about those goals that PGE has, and so those were included in the model. And so, yes, right around that year of twenty forty, there's the assumption that emissions from electricity have gone to zero, that they have achieved a hundred percent renewable energy. And that's why the remaining emissions from other sources end up being, taking up a higher proportion at at those end years, because the electricity sector, which right now is quite large, has undergone a very big change by that point. Absolutely.
And so, you know, I guess I have a comment based on that. I think it's fantastic that PGE and the state of Oregon have worked to to achieve those targets, and that they think they can do it, even though, you know, we may move away from hydroelectric. So that that's really good news. But, you know, to date, you know, the objective data is that we we haven't yet bent that curve. We're continuing to accelerate, you know, as a species, as a planet, we are continuing to go up the slope rather than come down. So are there any other areas besides the the phenomenal work that that PG is gonna do to to bring their, you know, carbon dioxide emissions down? Like, are there anything else that's baked into the cake that other people have already committed to in in shifting us down as well?
Yes, we did model the increasing efficiency from Northwest Natural. So they provided us with some some of their numbers that show some of their great plans to to increase efficiency, which will reduce emissions from natural gas. And as I said, they also have plans to increase the use, the the capture wastewater emissions for renewable natural gas. So that was that was electricity and gas. And then wastewater, we showed, we modeled no changes from, we just assumed current wastewater treatment technology remains the same. That could change. But then, oh, and then we modeled the other piece is transportation, of course. And so we modeled a certain adoption in EV adoption rates. There there are some national assumptions, you know, of what that's gonna look like nationally, and we doubled that. So we basically assumed that, or we, yeah, scenario one and two assumes that Salem residents will adopt electric vehicles faster than the rest of the country. And that they will start riding the riding transit more and all of those things. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it does. So there is, and I I was specifically gonna ask about that last piece. So there is some assumption that there'll be a move to electric vehicles and and a change in transportation. So I mean, my comment based on that is it's going to take, you know, an infrastructure system to support that. And and, you know, there are granular points built into the supporting documents here about having, you know, electric EV vehicle hookups for, you know, apartments where it's not like easy to do right now. So I mean, I think it's it's great. You guys have really touched on a lot of very important topics in here, but, you know, it's gonna take a lot of community action. So yeah, I think you guys have answered my questions. And if I think of more, I mean, I I think I will reach out to somebody to understand some of the the scaling and the numbers in that eighty one page document. Who's the best person to talk to?
You can you can email me, Counselor Phillips. Yep.
All right. Thank you so much for your time and the excellent summary tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kim, and all of the city staff as well for all your hard work. A lot of folks don't understand just the level of in-depth, behind-the-scenes work it takes to pull off a presentation like this, all the data they've done, the countless meetings. As we move forward, I hope everyone watching takes note of upcoming opportunities to provide ongoing public comment. Please provide comment at our upcoming public hearing. And please reach out to us, your city councilors, your elected officials. If there's something specific that you want to reach out to us, I encourage all of my residents in my ward to reach out to me. A couple of quick other comments. I'm pleased to see that in the Climate Action Plan strategies, working from home and telecommuting is still identified as one of the tasks that has an opportunity to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and can be relatively low cost compared to many other features. I for one approve that you can work from home, as are many, many other people who predominantly do their work from the benefit of a computer and the cell phone. So I encourage the city of Salem, as I have from day one, to continue making telecommuting an option, which they do for many of their current employees. And I encourage other employers to do everything they can to give those employees opportunities to have that flexibility and cut down traffic and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. There are multiple wins that can be achieved by embracing the new normal and the few the few silver linings that arise out of these circumstances. Another comment that I want to make, and please, Kim, please correct me if I'm wrong. In looking at the proposed strategies for the Salem Climate Action Plan, last modified August eleven of this year, I searched for the word natural gas. And when I look in there, I'm not seeing anywhere in the strategies, nowhere in there does it say, we're gonna rip out existing natural gas infrastructure. It does not say that. That's not being proposed. So I want the fear that we're not coming for existing natural gas. Am I correct? That is not a proposed climate action strategy this morning?
That's correct, Counselor Nordike.
Thank you. I knew it wasn't, but I wanted to get confirmation from the expert. What we're doing is looking at future opportunities. For example, page eight says there might be a new construction that is electric and does not have new natural gas hookups. That is just one potential option. In fact, it's not even being structured as a mandate. It says, adopt a voluntary reach code and work with ETO to provide incentives for new construction that is all electric. So I just want to reassure folks, you know, we're not, we're not gonna come in and take your natural gas. So I want to make sure that our existing businesses, our existing homeowners who do have that 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 that's not on the table. That's not up for discussion. But other than that, I for now want to take a step back and really remind folks, get in your public input. This is your opportunity to do so. And the city council will be making a final decision later this year. So please don't say we didn't give you opportunities to weigh in and let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Stapleton?
Yeah, I just had a a real quick question here. I saw in in the, I was one of those people who went through the eighty one page document. It did get a little like above my pay grade. But there was a section in there where it talked about the cost of implementing some of these different programs. Is there just an overall, this is how much it's gonna cost, or a range of how much it's going to cost altogether for, you know, scenario one and scenario two? Did I miss that somewhere?
No, you did not miss that. What you saw, I believe the eighty one page report you're referring to is the Benefit-Cost Analysis Report. And so what was feasible was to analyze ten strategies very thoroughly to really understand the benefit-cost ratio for for ten. And if we were to do that for a hundred and eighty, we would need much more time. So what we did is we just decided to use general cost indicators on the strategy list, which you probably saw too. So we we ranked them on a scale from one dollar sign to four dollar signs, kind of indicating how expensive each strategy may be. Our our assumption is that when the time comes for particular policy decisions to be placed in front of this council, that's when the particular cost-benefit analysis can be can be done. Because every proposed policy solution will have, of course, a range of possibilities in terms of the way it's actually implemented, the way it's framed, who it benefits, who it doesn't. And so those that kind of analysis and consideration needs to be done during the implementation process.
Thank you. Yeah, I I will say that, and I don't think this is a question that could be answered today, but the 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 big question of how are we going to pay for this? Was kind of really front and center in my mind the whole time I was I was looking at all of the attachments and 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 being excited. I don't wanna say that I'm not. And I think this is, this is probably the most important work that we're gonna do as council members. And so I'm here and I'm ready to do the work. But that whole idea of how are we gonna pay for this is really weighing on my mind. So I'll put that out there for my fellow councilors.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, this is Jose.
Ah, Jose, yes.
You know, I it's hard to believe that we're getting close to the end of this. And a lot of hard work, and I want to thank the staff and Kim and your earnest group for all their efforts. It's been really it's been really a great experience. You know, and as far as the projections, I'm glad that you were able to capture PGE's updated information. It's good news that Northwest Natural will be providing theirs. Are there any others? I haven't heard about Salem Electric. Are there any other entities that maybe we should reach out to to make sure we're getting as much information as they can provide, even if it's nothing? And with that information, especially this recent, this upcoming meeting with Northwest Natural, would that be ready, the the updated projections in time for our next committee meeting? Or when can we expect to see those?
Yes, great questions, Counselor Gonzalez. We will be meeting with Northwest Natural next week or the week after, so it'll be pretty soon. And we will, well, depending on the outcome of that meeting, if we if we find out that we need to make significant revisions, we'll probably want to do that before we release the draft plan to the public in mid-October. So we'll make sure to do that, and and you'll be able to see that then, see the revisions when it comes out. As to your other question, it's very nice of you to offer to to contact some of the other utilities. We didn't include Salem Electric because, as you may know, most of their electricity is generated from hydro. And so in effect, they are already a hundred percent renewable. So that, I mean, that was modeled into to the model, so we have that data. We did a lot of work reaching out to a lot of lot of subject matter experts, a lot of our community partners and agencies in the development of this modeling and the development of all of the strategies. So it's gone through lots and lots of review. There are always gonna be people we missed, data we missed, but there's nothing top of mind that that I could ask you to pick up the phone and do us a favor, but I sure appreciate you offering.
Oh, it sounds good. And and also why I ask is the the projections, the different scenarios. And I'm assuming, and this is, I guess, maybe more of a question, but for his car, car, electric car usage, you said Salem, we expect Salem to be double, maybe the average. Would you say those scenarios, those those graphs, are we assuming mid, like between pessimistic and optimistic? Where are we in far as those projections? Because, you know, the reason I ask is, as we move forward and start interacting with the community, I don't know if we need to, I want to give people hope that we're that we're all doing the right thing. You know, this this young generation today, their level of anxiety on this issue, you know, is causing a lot of stress and depression. It's it's really hurting them, you know. So I want to make sure as we're as we're out there working on this, that it's from a sense of hope and that we're working together to get this done, not not from that the negative side. And I'm not sure what the answer is gonna be, but, you know, that's just how I operate.
Yes, that's so important. And and I'm witnessing that too in in young people. So I totally agree. It's so important to to have those conversations. We, in terms of whether the projections were mid-range, yes. Our, my colleague Brian Harmon is very meticulous in doing the projections. And so he actually did three baseline scenarios in terms of what it would look like if Salem took no action. And the one we used was the mid-range. And the one we used was the mid-range. And similarly with scenario one, we use the mid-range of three scenarios. So we try to be realistic and informed, absolutely, in the data that we choose to circulate. So it's absolutely possible that we can do better than these projections. There are lots of things in the works that may make Salem's progress quicker. There are also things in the works on a federal level. For example, if the federal government at some point in the next 30 years decides to tax carbon dioxide, put a price on carbon, as they say, that would be a tremendously strong market signal that would probably lead to quicker, a quicker pace of change in all kinds of sectors. So it's a very dynamic environment with things moving on multiple levels. But I think it's important for the young people to, to stress that the systems that support them, meaning you all in your leadership role at the city, you are making change in, making large system change. And I think that's what everyone wants to see. Individual actions are absolutely important, but the large-scale change needs to be systemic. And that's what Salem is looking at doing. So that's what's exciting.
Thanks, Kim. Okay, anyone else? Okay, great. Well, excellent. Well, thank you very much. That was very informative, very well done, all the work. And particularly want to thank the committee and the three councilors who worked on this. Really appreciate the work that's been done on this. It's very interesting. I think it's really exciting stuff